Please. Butcher.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are now on to item 4.0 consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they would like removed from the consent agenda? Okay, then hearing none may have a motion, please.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, I just wanted to point out one thing for anyone who was carefully reading our agenda. We have one item on here, approval of application for Banning Lewis Prep Academy Charter Expansion. That's actually just a technicality. We approved that charter expansion this fall. It was subject to some conditions that the lawyers needed to work out. So this is just saying, yes, banning Lewis met the conditions we asked the lawyers to work out. So this charter had really already been approved and we're just finalizing kind of the legalese. And so with that, if no one else says anything, then let's have a vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. And so now we are on item 5.0 board update. And David, do you have anything to share this one?
Uh, no, not this week.
Okay, and Tammy?
Um, I just want to thank all of our staff, especially our facilities and our bus drivers, for getting out there and giving the schools cleared and then the bus drivers for doing such a great job of getting our kids to school safely and having no incidents last week. So, good job for that, those people, and thanks so much, Jack, to all your guys, girls.
And I would like to second that. Well, third it, but, but um, I would like to remind everybody that the Falcon Foundation has its fundraiser ban quit April 22nd. I encourage everybody to attend and bring your checkbook. It is a fundraiser to bring extra money into the classroom for some daring ideas that we as a board shouldn't fund. And then as far as the board goes, I will buy a table and you're all invited to join me. So, um, you have seats. Bring your checkbooks.
Okay, well, I'm gonna add on to the facilities comment. There we had over, we had 80 people digging schools out for three days. So if you think about how much that manpower was to do that. And I was driving around the district to many of the buildings today and I saw people still moving snow, an incredible amount of snow being moved so that as it was melting, they were getting pools that would form and refreeze overnight. So they literally had the big ground moving machinery out, taking snow further away so that it wouldn't freeze things back over. One gentleman was telling me about how he was literally moving some of the snow piles purposely near the trees and landscaping so that at least the snow would do some good and water things for us. So there was continuing work a full week later to continue to make sure that in this aftermath, our schools could stay functional and our kids had safe places to walk and to play and people could still park their cars. And I think our grounds were in better condition than many of the other places I had to walk or drive throughout the city. So I think you guys did a phenomenal job. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. And the last piece, please, for two things. One is we always have professional development for board members as a part of our information. And this month, what we've been provided with is some reading on how to work with our district to develop vision and goals through policy because as a board, we govern through policy. So that's our primary role and this kind of helps us understand better ways to use that to help continue to move our district forward. And second, please remember to fill out board members, your evaluation sheet so we can continue to grow and do a good job running our meetings. And with that, I believe we are now on to the chief update.
Well, I don't have anything from Peter this time. I don't know if I scared him away from last time. But you know, for, for my perspective from the business office, February is, is the slowest time in our annual calendar from the business office perspective. We just finished amended budgets, as you know, even though we'll be doing a supplemental budget for this current year, probably in March. But at this point where we're really starting to in earnest, make our plans for next fiscal year, both for hiring, you know, hiring plans for HR and budgets in the finance group. So it's kind of our chance to get prepared for those oncoming things.
Um, couple of things that, first of all, I want to echo, you know, the board's thanks for the facilities teams, the building maintenance team, the people that we deem essential and even the bus staff because they, they were tremendous on Tuesday and Wednesday and in very adverse conditions in some cases and some kids actually doing it by, you know, shoveling by hand, especially the building manager out at Falcon Elementary School. He actually dug a tunnel to get into the school. And as Marie said, they're continuing to do some of that efforts at this point in time. And what we did past few years, we actually a little bit of brainstorming session, you know, how can we better be better prepared for a catastrophic snowstorm like this in the future? So we've laid a few plans that hopefully we don't get that snowstorm again. And second of all, we're also doing a thing in conjunction with the long range planning office of really trying to come up with the overall facilities overview. And I would call it facilities at a glance and it's been really a collaborative effort between the IT folks, the facilities folks, long range planning. I'm very thankful that one of our systems called Utility Direct and School Dude can provide me the information for how efficient our schools are from a utility wise standpoint. And so that'll be coming forth in the very near future.
And Peter is not here tonight. He is out of state at a conference. And so that is why he's unable to be here. I just wanted to make sure people understood. We also have two student representatives who are normally here and we have one who couldn't come because of an issue that had to be taken care of at home and another who I think is still on his way, but we're not sure. I believe he was going to be running late possibly because of some commitments at school. So we're hopeful that we'll be able to hear their voice later in the meeting. And with that, we are now on to open forum. So I'll need the sign up sheet, please. And we have a couple of statements that go with that. And so first, as our policy states, we appreciate and welcome comments on school operations and programs in District 49 as part of tonight's open forum. Please speak into the microphone and state your name before beginning. We ask your comments be made in a respectful and orderly manner. Personal complaints against any individual connected with the school system are prohibited. Follow up action items may be assigned to the appropriate chief officer depending on the nature of the comments. In accordance with board policy BEDH, public participation is limited to three minutes per person. Thank you for participating in our open forum. It is the practice of our board to withhold any board comment or direction to the chiefs until after all who have signed up for open forum have had a chance to speak. I would also like to make you aware of our stakeholder grievance process. This process can be initiated by anyone in our District 49 community and guides the community member through the correct people to help resolve their concern, including as a final step, the opportunity to formally appeal to the board. We encourage you to utilize this process as many have successfully resolved their concerns this way. And with that, we have one person signed up and that is Mr. Murphy.
Daryl Murphy, parent. I just want to kind of follow from the last meeting. I'm extremely disappointed with you guys' decision with regard to SAC. I recognize you guys have the authority to do that, but I'm, it was anticipation that you would support our district leadership. We just, we just hope that you would listen to the parents that were generally concerned about the safety of the parents, safety of their kids and their community. You know, people in the community have said from time to time and that, you know, keep, you know, don't try to work with the board. They can't be worked with. And, you know, and I've always said, hey, no, use the process in place to, to actually, you know, work with them and try to get our elected officials to listen to what we have to say and to understand. But then to turn right around and read the paper and see some of the statements that were put in there that were just clearly not, not true. Outright lies about, about, you know, kind of process to wind down is extremely disappointing. We, we showed a year ago how we would actually been elected to be on the, on the SAC. And, and I would have been off the SAC two years ago if we could have got another volunteer to show up to fill my place. We only did it out of civic duty to support our community and our kids. And the fact that we refuse to just rubber stamp, you know, student innovation plans when we don't think they're right for our kids is just something that is, we felt duty bound to do. There's no hidden agenda about trying to go after Mr. Hiltz or anybody else. It was about seeing for the kids. Anybody who knows me has seen me as a volunteer in this community, has seen me as a, you know, worked with kids. I've been a coach in this community, volunteered my time. My time has always been about supporting the kids of this community and the teachers of this community. And that's what I've always strived to do. And I've always tried to work within the confines of, of the rules. I came up here and I've tried to, to work with the district. I've actually tried to go through, you know, and help out. And at, to this point, you know, clearly, this is probably one of the most disappointing things that I've actually seen occur. But the bright side is that, as with any process that goes on is that as the, as the students, as, as, as the taxpayers of Jefferson County showed, you can receive back, you know, your schools from, from boards that won't listen. And when you said that we weren't actually conducive with the, with the community of the Falcon High School community, when I've lived in the Falcon High School community for the last 15 years, I've had kids come through there. I've got kids all throughout the community that come and see me all the time. I live in the Sand Creek community, actually. I've got just many kids there that come and see me all the time and they show me love when I go to the basketball game. And last night I was at the Sand Creek game and had more Sand Creek kids see me, see me in that. But I say, I would say this is that, you know, it seems like it's time to, to seize back our schools, you know, charter movement, all the other things we try to work with the district to understand that, you know, it's just not the Falcon community that I grew up. These are our schools, our public schools, Falcon High School, Sand Creek High School, Vista Ridge, wonderful schools that truly be supported as opposed to trying to move down a charter direction. And you haven't listened to not just me, but to the community at large. So I'm not here to threaten anybody. I just want you to understand that I know exactly how much it takes to get the, the recall started.
Thank you, sir.
And it's gonna be started. Thank you.
Okay, and so we are now on to item 7.0. Action item 7.01, may I have a motion, please?
After discussion, discussion and review, I move to approve the revised innovation plan for Remington Elementary School as recommended by the administration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. And we are now on to 7.2, action on course additions and revisions. 7.2A.
I move to approve the two course additions in item 7.2A as recommended by the administration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I just want to remind everybody, we actually discussed these all in a work session. So when we say we've discussed it extensively, it actually happened.
And it happened with students present and able to provide us some input on their excitement about some of these courses.
And you guys are invited to the work sessions. Yeah. They're fine.
And now may we have a vote, please? Butcher.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. And for our next, item 7.01B, Concert Choir and Vocal Music Program.
After discussion at the previous work session, I move to approve the course and fee changes outlined in item 7.2B as recommended by the administration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 7.2C, Advanced Game Design.
I move to approve the course proposal for advanced game design at Vista Ridge High School.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. Game Design 2.
I move to approve the course proposal for game design 2 at Vista Ridge High School.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 7.2E, Technical Writing for Science.
I move to approve the course proposal for technical science for writing at Vista Ridge High School.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. 7.03, action on revised job description. 7.03A, The Pathways Data Technician.
I move to approve the recommended changes to the pathways data technician job description.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 7.03B, Health Paraprofessional.
After discussion at a previous meeting, I move to recommend revisions to the health profession, paraprofessional job description as recommended by the administration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 7.04, G49 School Calendar.
After review and discussion, I move to approve policies ICA and GBD, Regulation ICA-R and the proposed 2016, 17, and 2017, 18 calendars as recommended by the administration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, and this piece, I just wanted to point out that the purpose of this would be that we are truly bringing back a calendar that is unified from the parent perspective. So if you have a child in multiple zones or work in one zone and have kids in another zone or any of those types of things, what your family experiences from the parent and child perspective will be the same regardless of the zone that you are in. That's what this policy is putting in place as well as those next two years worth of calendars. So families, we heard you, we listened. Staff, we heard you, what you, and listened to the things that were your priority too. And this is our attempt to try and make sure everyone's needs are met. And so we're excited about this and that we'll know our next two years. Okay, so no other discussion. Let's have a vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. 7.05, action on the 2016 Election Planning Communications Plan.
After discussion at previous meetings, I move to approve the attached communication plan regarding potential participation in the November 2016 general election.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none of vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. 7.05, or 7.06, sorry, action on the I Connect Zone Growth and Development Plan.
After review and discussion, I move to approve the attached resolution and timeline as recommended by the administration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I did have questions for the PLC Zone leader who answered them in writing to me. So I was, felt that their response was good, so.
Anyone else have any questions or comment? Okay, so then let's move that forward for a vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. 7.07, action on policies.
After review and discussion, I move to approve the 14 policies in item 7.07.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I just have to say, in the, long time ago, I, when I was reading these, like four years ago, we had to read every policy name by name. So that was a long time and I don't know how many of you sat here in those meetings, but I'm really thankful we can do it this way now.
And the, if I remember correctly from my reading, all of the changes here were essentially technical changes. Some were just changes in who the reporting person is. Others were just making sure we were updated with statutes. So there wasn't anything that was a major shift. And so with no further discussion, let's have a vote. Butcher.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
And for 7.08, this is an emergency approval, correct? So we need to word that separately?
Yes.
As a temporary approval?
Yes, a temporary and it'll come back at the next work session and subsequent meeting.
I move to approve regulation LBD-R on a temporary basis.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Yeah, the purpose, usually regulations aren't approved by the board. It's our policy to have the regulations under the custodian because those tend to get adjusted fairly frequently and have to do more with how policy is carried out. But there was some technical pieces in LBDR that needed to be adjusted. And because we don't normally have to vote on regulations and they're usually presented just as information, there was a misstep and it should have been on our work session agenda. And there's a timeline piece that's important to be approved for future charter applicants. So it's important that we get it approved now so that we have that timeline in place correctly for the next cycle of applicants. And at the same time, we will still have to go through the same normal to read and review to put it in place as a permanent. So that's what this process actually is. And so now, let's vote. Butcher.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. And so we are now 8.0, our items that are simply for board information. The second would be now we're on 9.01, Falcon Zone Performance Report, and that's Julia Roark.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board and chief officers. I'm Julia Roark and thank you for this opportunity to share about the performance, the current performance in the Falcon Zone of District 49. As you may recall, when I first came before you back in the fall, early fall, we had, as a zoned administration team, we had set some goals around primary literacy and 49 pathways. So you may recall that we have set a goal for the end of this year to be at least 90% of third graders reading at or above grade level according to the DIBELS benchmark. And to have a score, an average score on the ACT composite for our current 11th graders at Falcon High School to be at least 21. So some of the data that I am sharing in terms of the middle of the year where we are at this point, if you look at the primary literacy and the goal around 90% of third graders, when we look at all K through 3, you will see the growth that we've had from the beginning of the year, which is the BOY to the middle of the year. You'll see that for all three of our elementary schools, our progress has been rated as well above average according to the representatives from Amplify, the group that we use for our measurement and data analysis. And so these are national results that nationally we are ranked well above average for our progress. And you can see at Falcon Elementary School, there was a 17% difference in that percentage. Merton Ranch, you see the 10% and at Woodman Hills, you see the 11%. When we look at just third grade on its own, and once again, this is our, our actual goal that we're looking at right now, you can see that we are approaching that go, we, goal. We've made a lot of progress since the beginning of the year. You can see the changes in the percentage, 60% at Falcon Elementary School for third grade, 7% for Merton Ranch and the 10% for Woodman Hills. So overall, we've had an 11% improvement and we are currently at 85% at grade level at the middle of the year. So we are, obviously, the principals and the staff at each of the schools are working hard and looking at the kinds of adjustments they can make now to ensure that by the assessment we provide in May, that we see an even greater improvement and that we reach that 90%. So they are making a lot of mid-year shifts and looking at that intensity and frequency of the interventions that they're providing and looking, each individual school looks at their own adjustments that they need to make per school based upon the population and the characteristics that they have. We know that when we look at this also, we know that we reduced, we also reduced the number, or excuse me, the percentage of students who are considered at high risk. So the students that have the greatest distance between where they are and being at benchmark, we went from 17% for third grade at the beginning of the year, 17% of our third graders were at high risk. We're now at 9% of our third graders at a high risk. This represents 25 third graders across our zone. And we also have, currently have 19 third graders who are at some risk. So what we know is we need to move those 19 students who are at some risk to benchmark and we need to move at least half of our students who are at high risk right now. We need to pride, provide them with the support to be at benchmark by the end of the year. So we are, we have that goal inside and we're working on it. In terms of 49 pathways, a couple of things that currently we're working at that you hear across, across the district of course, when we look at the individual career and academic plans for students. At Falcon Middle School, you can see what the completions, completion rates are for the various steps along the way with the ICAPS at this point in time. So we have really good percentage rates for those. And you also see at Falcon High School, they have had, 88% of the students have met with their advisor at least once and they're on track, those 88% are on track with ICAPS and the work that they're doing with college in Colorado as well. And then we meet again second semester. And one of the points that Mrs. George made in terms of the 12% who have, have not met at this point and are not necessarily on track, she said the majority of those are seniors and so they're not quite as motivated or interested in this at this point in time. I think they've already had, they probably already have their plans in place, we would think so. And they are also at the high school, they're using the, that ICAP information as well as they're working with students to build schedules for students and also look at the concurrent enrollment options. Something else with Falcon Middle School as well, that I included, included in your notes was an interesting process in which the team of counselors and administrators and teachers at Falcon Middle School used the information from the ICAPS in terms of students' interests and overall interest and also career interests to help them in selecting their mini courses for the, the special courses that they did at the, was the end of October, Brian? Yeah, it's, yeah, so it was in, in November. And so they're also doing a survey with the students, they're surveying the students to see the students' responses and feedback on how that helped them in their enjoyment and motivation around the courses that they completed and then also how that might be impacting their future decisions and ideas around their ICAPS and just their future pathways, so. For us, we also have that ACT goal, which we'll see how that plays out over the next year, if it changes to an SAT goal. At this point, we have an ACT goal of having that average composite at least 21 by the end of this year. And one of the pieces that's really important, that is the math portion. We find, and I believe I shared that when I presented in the fall, that one of the key areas we saw where we were really below the bar, below the standard that we would want was, was in math. And so one of the things that the high school has been doing, a major focus that they've really had is providing time for students across all classes, providing time every Friday for warmups and activities and extra practice around some of those math skills and concepts that they identified through this algebra readiness test. And so they set a target that by May, when they give the test again at the, at the end of the year, that they would have at least 70% of the, that the average for the students would be at least a 70%, that they would average 70% indicating that they had overall mastered most of those skills. So they gave the mid-year test and you can see that they are on target. If you look at the aim line, they are on target to reach that 70% goal by the end of the year. And then they can continue to raise that particular expectation as they move through next year as well, so. The other piece I just wanted to mention, we've done a lot of work zone wide. The other piece I just wanted to mention, we've done a lot of work zone-wide, particularly K through 8, on classroom instruction that works. I know I've shared some of this in some of the CEO reports over the past few months. So when we look where we are mid-year with our professional development around best practices, best instructional practices, we know that all of our K through 8 teachers have been involved in reflecting on how they're using those strategies during their middle of the year reviews with their supervisors and evaluators. We also know that all of our instructional coaches are using a walkthrough form that is directly aligned with classroom instruction that works. And they also gather together to calibrate their feedback and how they're actually observing and making determinations on whether a teacher is actually using a strategy or not. And then you see also that all of our principals are working together on how we're using the data we're collecting as administrators, and using that to determine possible future professional development. So you can see, this is just one school. I say I don't have a lot of time, so I'm going to go very quickly. So this is just how one school is gauging through a walkthrough form that they're using. So it shows just the times they've observed each of the particular areas within the learning objectives of the creating the learning environment piece of classroom instruction that works. So this gives the principal and other administrators in the building that information that helps them know where they need to go next. And just another example as well, in terms of strategies, and what they've seen so far in terms of the times they've observed it. The other thing, just very quickly, we are developing our Falcon Zone Improvement Plan. So part of that is creating and implementing a Falcon Zone Coalition. And we're meeting on February 24th for the first time to involve more community members, parents, students, just a broad variety of folks from across the Falcon Zone to get together and start looking at, what are we proud of? What are our strengths? What do we wish we were doing better? And helping us to focus on our goals as well, so. So part of that is creating a story about who we are and, and why we want to continue to improve, and helping to focus on the primary literacy and the 49 pathways, building teacher leadership and instructional capacity, and identifying a framework for our zone around, what are the non-negotiables in terms of instruction, in terms of primary literacy, in terms of 49 pathways? What are those things that we all want to stand for together? So just in closing, just trying to build everything we're doing around our mission of achieving excellence through the collective responsibility for student learning, and trying to live up to that with trust, compassion, and integrity. Thank you.
I just want to give you first kudos for the number of very high-risk third graders that moved up. Because anyone who's experienced what a reading gap is like, by the time a child is at very high risk in third grade, that gap is incredibly big and incredibly difficult to close. I have a third grader who's closing the gap myself. So I know the intensity it's taken. So that's an incredible accomplishment. I realize we need to continue to work to move all of the kids who are still below that benchmark up. But the most encouraging thing to me in what I saw and heard in that data was the number of kids who moved out of that very high-risk column. That's key, and it means we've got the right things in place to really build it, and it's just going to keep getting better. So great job to all of our primary literacy folks. And I can, as a parent, I want to say kudos on the ICAP process in the middle school. It's pretty incredible to hear my 12-year-old seventh grader come home, and she's pretty focused now on kind of what the things are she's really interested in. And she's now telling me, well, Mom, can you help? Show me how to do this, because if I really want to work with preschoolers in a day, in a daycare or as a preschool teacher, I'm going to need to know how to do these things. So not only is she thinking about it in school, but she's thinking about it at home, looking at the kinds of things she can help with at home that might help her learn some of those skills. And I don't know that if that conversation wasn't happening in an ICAP process in a middle school, I don't know that a 12-year-old, especially my 12-year-old, would be so focused on what she might be doing at 19, 20, or 21. And so to see her, and the comments I heard from the staff members we met with as a part of her plan, really talked about how much her work ethic had improved. And I was like, you know, I think some of that is because she's shooting for a goal. And so I think that 49 pathways process, as we're improving it and putting it in place, is really helping kids think about their future and realizing that they have some control over it and some impact, and some decisions that they can make even at 12. And that's a pretty cool thing, too. I think that can only continue to bring some better things, and it's going to help the high school when they get there. So kudos Falcon Middle.
Excellent job. When I was a younger father, we had a book series that we used to read to the kids. And they, you know, in the beginning of each book, it always said, "Reading is the magic key to take you where you want to be." And I've always firmly believed that. So this is, this is great, and hopefully we can, you know, get these kind of results throughout the whole school district and bring up, you know, those that are still struggling to rise to the challenge.
And our, our goal is really 100%, but for now, it's 90%, so. We don't want to leave anybody out, so.
Well, you know, we've been pretty tough as far as third grade reading. You know, we've been pretty direct as a board, and you guys really have stepped up to the plate. And it's not for any other reason except for the kids. You guys are really doing a great job. It's going up. You know what I mean? Nothing is wrong, isn't building a day. So you guys, it's taking it step by step, and you're growing, and you're getting better and better. So thank you very, very much. Really, great job.
Thank you.
And we are on to our final item for the night, new course additions. And that would be from Vista Ridge. Do we have anyone who is going to speak to them? Okay, well, they were in our packet, and essentially, they were looking at adding Advanced Placement AP Physics for E&M, which is electricity and magnetism, and AP Physics for mechanics as possible courses for kids interested in college engineering. Anyone have questions we can send back to anybody, or concerns about either of those classes?
I think this is a, at the high school level, this is, to me, pretty incredible that kids would be taking this. I avoided this in high school. I had to take it in college, but I did avoid it in high school. And to have that opportunity, I think maybe not, you know, obviously not all kids will take it, as long as we have a good screening process. But, you know, the kids who take this and excel, succeed, are going to have a big leg up when they get to college, if they choose that path.
Okay, so are we ready to move that forward for action at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so Donna, we'll move that forward, please. Do we have any other business tonight? All right, then, if we hear no other business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
It goes pretty fast when we don't have any financial records.
I knew something was missing.
We love you, Ron and Ryan.
I can remember. I'll remember. So in March, we'll have like a six-hour meeting, because there's some financial stuff there. Remember, we have 35,000 accounts. We can, we can start going through them one by one. I think if you do that at the work session this coming up, I would appreciate that.
All right, I move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher?
Yes.
Harold? I mean Graham, sorry.